Mr. Cardinal General, I would like to meet the auditorium with everybody. Please rise for the prayer and Ms. Folchey.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon each of us since we last gathered together. As we enter the new year together and choose our leadership, we ask a special blessing upon those who offer themselves for service. Lead, guide, and direct all of our actions so that they may truly be in the best interests of the children we serve, for it is in your name we ask these things.
Ms. Craft, would you lead us in the place?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Folchey, drill call please.
Mrs. Acevedo, Mr. Campbell, Mrs. Kraft, Mr. Egan, Mrs. Lemoine, Mrs. Daisart, Mr. England, Mr. Long is ill tonight, Mr. Smith is not with us, Mr. Warner, and Mrs. White.
Thank you, Ms. Folchey. Ms. Lemoine, you have a point of privilege?
Yes, thank you, Mr. England. As you all know, we have a fantastic partnership with Nunez Community College, our dual enrollment and early college academy program. Each year, the Nunez Foundation does one scholarship fundraiser event, and again, all the proceeds from this event help to fund scholarships and opportunities for students that are in need. This year, the gala is being held this Saturday, January 26th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Dockville Farm. It's the Pelican and Pearls Gala. We will have food from 10 area restaurants, a beautiful silent auction, and lots of fun. Tickets are $55, and you can purchase them online, at the door, or at the college. And if you have any questions, let me know. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. I know it's going to be an exciting time.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, community concerns. Ms. Panazak, has anybody signed up, please?
No sign up.
Okay, thank you. Move on to item number five, super news. Ms. Snyder, good evening.
Good evening. It has been a busy month in January for our schools and our school system. Tonight, I'm going to keep our communications brief, as we do have schools, two schools to feature during this month's super news. On the first page of your communications report, you will see some of the press coverage we received over the last few weeks, from the Christmas activities, both at Chalmers High School and throughout the district, to our recent swearing-in of our new and returning board members. You'll see that on the front page. On page two, you will find a report of the social media posts since the last meeting. With two weeks off for the Christmas break, there are fewer than normal, but we'll be getting back right into it over the next couple of weeks. And finally, you have a year look at the website analytics, so that's the 2018 website analytics, and you'll be able to see their trends for the year on viewership and such, with our highest peaks in times when fewer employees, students, and families are visiting our site over the summer. So that is all included, and without further ado, I'm going to throw it back to Barry and Jack for this month's super news.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for super news.
Hi, I'm Alex Schneider.
And I'm Barry Lemoine, and welcome to this edition of super news, where we share all the good things that are happening in our school system.
We'll kick off this month's super news with a look back at the festivities that closed out 2018, highlighted by the spirit of the holiday season. First up was the annual
its children's festival. Two stages showcased the performing groups at each of our elementary schools. From chorus and band to dance and cheer, there was something for everyone at
CHS Christmas show, where dozens of students and hundreds of audience members gathered
this spirited event.
And, in a holiday first, the Chalmers High School Cultural Arts Center was the site to celebrate the varied talent on display. for a special event, a presentation of Handel's Messiah. Partnering with the Symphony Chorus, the Chalmers High School Voices took part in this iconic and beautiful music tradition.
Also spreading holiday cheer were two groups of elementary students. The choir from Chalmers Elementary School visited St. Bernard Parish Hospital, while youngsters from Gotee Elementary School performed with and for the folks at the Council on Aging. Both groups shared their talent, kindness, and represented our school community in a positive and selfless light.
And speaking of service, we'd like to welcome our new board members to our family. Here we see Ms. Carolyn Kraft and Rosalind White being sworn in. Each of our returning members also took part in the ceremony in front of family and friends.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 10.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 10.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
The work, leadership, and support of our board has also earned our school district a B rating despite the more challenging scoring system being used this year. And for the fourth year in a row, Chalmers High School was named as an A school. Congratulations to all of the students, faculty, and families on this ongoing success, for as we all know, strong schools make for a stronger community.
And speaking of community, let's head over to Arlene Mero Elementary School and meet its on-location reporters.
Hello and welcome to Arlene Mero Elementary School for our super news segment. I'm Alexis Clausen.
And I'm Mariah Major, and we are your reporters for today. And we are happy to be here to share some of the good things happening at our school. First off, congratulations to my friend Alexis, who is a student of the year.
Thanks, Mariah. And now, we'll kick things off with a really fun event, our family dance. At Arlene Mero Elementary, we truly believe that family envelopment is a key to our success, so this fall, we held our second annual father-daughter-and-mother-son dances. It was a wonderful opportunity to dance the night away and spend quality time together making memories to last a lifetime.
So if a kid is dancing with his mom at a parade, that will be a Mardi Gras mambo. Anyway, our grandparents were also on our campus recently for our school's math and science night. This was the first time grandparents were part of this event, and it was really sweet to see the youngsters and young at heart working together onto fun hand-on activities.
And speaking of sweet, our honeybees have been hard at work, and you can see it paying off at a number of performances, including the Mero Talent Show and McDonald's Night. They also showed their patriotism by marching in St. Bernard's Veterans Day Parade. The girls loved dancing, waving their American flags, and telling the veterans who attended thank you. The honeybees also participated in the Battle of the Bees event hosted by the CHS cheerleaders. The girls flipped, cheered, and performed stunts. We took home the Rising Star Trophy and loved showing our spirit and supporting the other groups.
And now, we'll get down to earth as we pay a visit to our garden club. Twice each month, our club members clean our garden beds and recently planted winter vegetables. And once the plants mature, we will have fresh carrots, Brussels sprouts, onions, and more. At least, let us hope so. Students really enjoy caring for the garden and nurturing their seeds into mature plants.
In other news, Coach Gilchrist and Coach Buddy have joined the American Heart Association to raise money for Jump Rope for the Heart. In addition to heart-healthy activities during PE, they are also raising monetary donations from the community by sponsoring students. It's a great time for a great cause.
Well, that's this for now. Here at Arlene Elementary, we will remind you to be kind, be healthy, and be your best.
And good night from the home of the green, gold, and white.
Bye.
Thanks. And now, we'll go from Arlene Mero Elementary to Mero, Louisiana, as we will meet our news crew at NP Tris Middle School.
Hello and welcome to Tris Middle School, home of the Pirates. I'm Abigail.
And I'm Junior. And today, we will share some of the good things happening here at NP Tris Middle School, like my friend and sidekick, Abigail Coker, being named as the parish-wide middle school student of the year. Congrats. Your Pirate family is really proud of you.
Thank you so much. And now, we'll get things started with a look at the things that are easy to notice, the upgrades to our campus. Our new building includes classrooms as well as a science and computer lab. We are also proud of our outside soccer field, baseball, and softball field.
We're also proud of the things happening in our school, like our BLB Club, which stands for Best Library Buddies. Here, we pair up the eighth-grade English 1 class with Ms. Romando's Special Education Class to provide mentorship and to help them search for books. But the program has grown into so much more. For instance, when these students participate in Special Olympics, they already have a buddy to accompany them. School assemblies, lunch programs, and other outside activities has really helped our students to engage with each other. Nice job, BLB Club.
You know, when I was little, I didn't go to the library too much because I heard it was book. In other news, the Tris Student Council and Builders Club recently coordinated a pair of events in partnership with the Community Center of St. Bernard, a food drive and a toy giveaway. We are thankful for our Tris students and staff for their generosity.
We would also like to congratulate the coaches and players who were a part of the Tris Lady Pirate volleyball team. This year's team competed in the Big School Division of 11 teams and were crowned the Greater New Orleans 2018 Metro Volleyball Champions. Nice job.
Congratulations also go out to the sponsors of our Tris Beta Club, who stepped up to host the annual district day at school. Organized by Alicia Kapsick and Julie Abity, 10 schools from St. Bernard, New Orleans, Metairie, Kenner, and Plaquemines brought over 400 students to our campus for a day of spirit camaraderie and competition. District Day allows winners to compete on the state level at the annual Beta Convention, which will be held next month in Lafayette's Cajun Dome. Congratulations to the state qualifiers.
And finally, we'd like to give a shout-out to Tris Cheerleader Cameron White, who recently participated in 2018 UCA All-American Thanksgiving Tour in Disney World. She, Abigail, Peyton Adams, and Bryn Plusha were named as All-Americans and were invited to participate in the Junior High Varsity All-American Thanksgiving Tour, held in Orlando, Florida, in Disney World. Cameron attended and represented our school and community in great fashion, one of 800 girls nationwide who took part in this magical event at the Magic Kingdom.
Well, that will just about do it for us here at NP Tris. Thanks for joining us for super news.
Bye.
Great job to our super news reporters, and we look forward to meeting more of them in the future. We would also like to congratulate all of our students of the year for being honored as the best of the best at each school site. Recently, each of these outstanding young people was interviewed by a panel of judges, and when the scores were tallied, three students were announced as our district-wide winners. Stay tuned for our next super news when we will meet each of these outstanding students.
Other students received an accolade, were seniors Haley Abrams and Brian Williams, who will join the ranks of some elite company. Chalmers High School students who were named as Posse Scholars. Since 2011, the Posse Foundation has awarded over $34 million in scholarship money to high school scholars in the greater New Orleans area. This year, Chalmers High School is home to two of these outstanding students. Congratulations Haley and Brian.
Well, that will just about do it for today, but before we go, let's take a look at some of the activity that was all part of the eighth-grade school visit day here at Chalmers High School, where students learn more about the people and the programs available.
Thanks for tuning in, and we'll see you next time on super news, where we always let the super news roll. We'll see you next time.
Alex, y'all doing a fantastic job, and so many exciting things happening in our school system, but I'll tell you this, out in the public, I do hear from some parents about the super news, and they really enjoy it. Thank you. Ms. Folchey.
I just want to, one of the items that were mentioned, and I know we'll hear more about it later, but that two of the Chalmers High students received the Posse Foundation Scholarship. And we've talked about this before, it seems every year, we have anywhere from one to four winners, and those, that's throughout the greater New Orleans area. And Haley Abrams will have a full tuition scholarship to Notre Dame University through the Posse. And the young man that you saw, Brian Williams, a full tuition scholarship to Tulane University. So, I mean, that was incredible, and the support that they received from their teachers and such at Chalmers High School made a lot of this possible, but these are two exceptional young people, and I'll be remiss if I didn't say, the young lady is Shelby's niece, so we want to congratulate. She had nothing to do with any of that. The Posse Foundation chose those in the New Orleans area, but just want to congratulate both of those two young people, and they're two among the many who receive quite a significant sum in terms of scholarships each and every year from Chalmers High School.
Thank you, Ms. Folchey. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I just, first of all, wanted to comment that Tris School with the addition looked really nice, and it looks like it's being well utilized. So that's great.
It's the eighth grade wing.
The eighth grade wing, pardon me. Also, Ms. Snyder, we almost got 2 million hits? Is that, am I looking at that right?
Over the course of the time, and those eight, mm-hmm, yes, sir.
For one, for a year period, 2 million hits on our website in a year's time. That's fantastic. I notice it goes down to June, it goes to nothing.
Very few families and teachers come to our websites in June. We'll work on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Snyder, thank you for all your help and your efforts. Thank you. Okay, move on to item number six, election of offices. Ms. Daisart, will you take over, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. England. Okay, first office to be elected would be the Office of President. The floor is now open for nominations at this time. Mr. Warner?
I'll nominate Cliff England to be president for the term 2019.
There is a nomination by Mr. Warner for Mr. Cliff England for president. Is there a second? Okay, second by Mr. Smith. Okay, are there any other nominations at this time for the Office of President? There being none, can I have a motion to close the floor for nominations?
There should be a motion to be closed.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell to close the nominations, seconded by Ms. Acevedo. All in favor of the motion to close the nominations? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. England.
I'd just like to thank all my board members for giving me the opportunity to serve for another year, because this is a board that's really put together, and we're all working on the same page for one purpose, the children of St. Bernard. So, we really appreciate that. I appreciate that you gave me the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. England?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Daisart. Next thing is for Vice President. At this time, I'd like to need a motion, a nomination for Vice President, please.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Who are you going to make the motion for?
Ms. Daisart.
Ms. Daisart, okay, fine. You're going to second that, right?
Yes.
Right, okay, that's, just got ahead of myself right there, so. Any other nominations?
The nomination should be closed.
Yeah, the nomination should be closed. The other, by Mr. Campbell, seconded, okay. Nominations are closed. Congratulations, Ms. Daisart.
Thank you, Mr. England, and also thank you to our fellow board members. I do appreciate the opportunity to continue on as the Vice President and to work alongside Mr. England and all of you, you know, on the St. Bernard Parish School Board. It's a privilege and an honor, not only to be a school board member, but also to serve as Vice President, so I appreciate your support, and we look forward to another successful year, and thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again, Ms. Daisart.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, thank you.
At this time, I'd just like to take a point of privilege, too, just to mention to all board members, since we've got the offices assigned. At the next meeting, at the general meeting, we're going to have the committee assignments and other responsibilities. So if you'd like to serve on a certain committee, please let me know, and I can put you on a committee. If not, I'll make the committee assignments, and you'll be at this at the next meeting, okay? Thank you. Okay, move on to most, item number seven, motion to authorize the newly-elected school board president to sign on school board checking accounts on behalf of the board.
So move.
Have a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes, ten seconds.
All right, you got it. There we go. Moving on to number eight. Item number eight, motion to incorporate the minutes of the January 2019 General Committee Meeting into the minutes of the January 2019 regular monthly meeting. Have a motion by Ms. Daisart, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any questions concerning this, about the minutes? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes, ten seconds.
Okay, move on to item number nine, motion to approve the resolution stating date, time, and place for the 2019 General Committee Meeting, a regular monthly meeting. Let me read the resolution, then we'll make a motion. Whereas Title 17 requires local school boards to hold at least one regular monthly meeting, and a public written notice of the meeting be given, and whereas Act 707 of the 1977 Louisiana Legislature exempts local school boards from having to give written notice of each regular meeting by adopting the resolution establishing the date, time, and place of the regular meeting. And whereas the Louisiana School Board Association has recommended that all school boards in the state of Louisiana adopt a resolution to the effect that the resolution should be given appropriate written public notice, therefore be resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board hereby establish 6:00 PM on the second Tuesday of each month for the calendar year 2019 to meet as a committee of a whole for a general committee meeting, and 6:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month for the calendar year 2019 to meet for the regular monthly board meetings, with the following exceptions: February 19, 2019 for its regular monthly meeting, May 21, 2019 for a general committee meeting, November 19, 2019 for a regular monthly meeting, December 17, 2019 for the regular monthly meeting, and it be resolved that the said meetings will be conducted in the St. Bernard Parish School Board Office, 200 East St. Bernard Highway, Chalmers, Louisiana, that an agenda will be posted 24 hours prior to a meeting, and be further resolved that a written public notice be given at least 24 hours in advance of any change in a date, time, and place of regular meeting, and be further resolved that the resolution be posted in the St. Bernard Parish School Board Office, and that copies will be forwarded to all local newspapers. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any questions about the resolution? If all of y'all are in favor, please cast your vote, please.
Motion passes, ten seconds.
All right. We go on to item number 10, review for personal changes for January 2019. Ms. Folchey?
Okay, you just have, right, he's not with us tonight. You have before you the changes since the last committee meeting, I mean, yes, which are highlighted in yellow. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Ms. Daisart?
Yes, I see one, we have one retirement, Ms. Lucretia Billiard, and we just want to say thank you for your years of service with the St. Bernard Parish School System. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daisart. Anyone else? Okay, this is information only. So move on to item number 11, consideration of tax and industrial tax exemption application 20170154. Ms. Folchey?
Okay, are there any requests to speak on the item?
Right, any requests for speaking on this item?
Okay.
Because you'll have a right to speak on this item.
Right, that's what the cards are for, if anyone wishes to. Before you for item 11 is a request for an industrial tax exemption from Chalmers Refining, having to do with the PRL startup and improvements. The exemption would amount to the total amount of money that would be brought in for this one is $465,205. If you look at the breakdown on the sheet that we gave you, the 80%, which is what the exemption requests, is $372,164, and the 20%, as you can see on the chart, is the $93,041. And I guess, since we're taking that one separately, the total amount of taxes which would be realized the first year would be approximately $465,205. And as you can see, this is a chart, it goes out 10 years with estimations based on depreciated values and the applicable millage rates as they exist today being applied to those. So the amount that's generated each year is, decreases slightly each and every year, as those depreciation amounts are put into effect.
Ms. Folchey, this was by Governor Edwards, because in the past, they were automatically given these exemptions, but Governor Edwards has came back and gave it to locals for them to look at. So it's up to the locals to whether they give that exemption or not, so...
That's correct. It was usually done prior to the executive order by the governor. It was usually done by the state board, but now, once the state board determines that something, that a project may be potentially eligible for an exemption, then it goes to the local governing bodies in each individual locality to make...
the exemption request is, $372,164. And the 20%, as you can see on the chart, is the $93,041. And I guess since we're taking that one separately, the total amount of taxes which would be realized the first year would be approximately $465,205. And as you can see, this is a chart that goes out 10 years with estimations based on depreciated values and the applicable millage rates as they exist today being applied to those. So the amount that's generated each year is, decreases slightly each and every year as those depreciation amounts are put into effect.
Ms. Foche, this was by Governor Edwards, because in the past, they were automatically given these exemptions. But Governor Edwards has came back and gave it to locals for them to look at. So it's up to the locals to whether they give that exemption or not, so.
That's correct. It was usually done prior to the executive order by the governor. It was usually done by the state board. But now, once the state board determines that something, that a project may be potentially eligible for an exemption, then it goes to the local governing bodies in each individual locality to make the decision as to whether or not they would grant the exemption at an 80% rate.
And at this time, we had inside a certain amount of days to inform them whether we'd go with the 20% or for the full amount.
That's correct. That is correct. So we would need a motion to either grant the exemption or deny the exemption.
Okay. Now, these funds, I spoke with Ms. Foche, and I think we spoke with quite a few of the board members, and these funds will be probably dedicated to pay raises and for benefits for the employees. And the past, we never received this money, is time that we received some of these funds. Now, these two that's on the agenda tonight, these are really like turnarounds, okay? This is not creating jobs, okay? That's maintaining jobs, yes, okay? But they're not creating jobs, okay? Now, when we have exemptions, the requests come in later, any years to come, say in 2019, if it puts jobs and people moving to St. Bernard Parish, and they become taxpayers, we'll take a different look, okay? But as it stands right now, I feel, you know, but it's up to the board, we're going to need a motion on this, you know, that we dedicate this money and go for 100%, okay?
Make a motion to deny?
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Warner.
The emphasis that we use the money generated is toward pay raises for employees and benefits for our employees.
That's correct. Yes, sir. Okay, anybody, anybody has any questions? Okay, we have the floor, and stand what we're doing, okay? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, good. Move on to item number 12, consideration of industrial tax exemption application 20170155. Ms. Foche.
This also is from Chalmitt Refining for the new tank construction. This is a lesser amount of money. The, if you look at the spreadsheet that you have here, the 80% exemption requested in the first year would be $137,383. 20%, which the school board would keep regardless of the action, would be $34,346. That's a total amount of $171,729, and that is the estimated value for the first year. So given the board's prior action on number 11, which would generate a total of $465,000, this one, if the exemption were denied, would generate $171,729 for a total value of the two at $636,000 the first year. Now, the succeeding years, it would be lesser amounts, and they're not on top of each other. The first year, we're looking at $636,000 in total, the second year, a little bit less, third year, a little bit less, because these projects are depreciated in value on a yearly basis.
And this applies to the same as the item number 11. So, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Warner.
I'll second it. Same thing, the emphasis to use this toward teacher and employees' pay and benefits.
Yes, sir. I agree 100% with that. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Item number 13, items to be placed on agenda for next committee meeting. You have up to so many days, like five days, to get in touch with, well, you can just get in touch with myself, Ms. Manazaka, Ms. Foche, or Ms. Tysor, and we can have that put on an agenda. So, move on to item number 14, superintendent's recommendations.
Oh, we, I think we covered a lot in Super News. I just wanted to make mention that today, our students were not in attendance, and we had a wonderful in-service day for all of our employees. And we had a little special part of it, I'm going to ask Ms. Lemoine to comment on, our career and tech ed teachers, in conjunction with Nunez Community College merged to have that in-service day. So, Ms. Lemoine, if you'd mention a little bit about what happened with that group.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Foche. Yes, today on campus, we welcomed about 30 of the Chalmitt High Career and Tech Education teachers, and we were able to take them on a visit to the Boeing facility, where we're training students for our new aerospace manufacturing program. Nunez is the only college in the state of Louisiana to offer this program, again, a very high-wage, high-demand job and career pathway, which is a great opportunity for students to come to school and learn how to build a rocket, essentially. So after the trip to Boeing, the staff came back to campus and did a tour of campus and learned about all of the career and tech ed, transfer, and workforce programs that we have on campus to better be able to explain to students who are interested in college and career pathways, what we have to offer. So we want to thank Mr. Hudman and the staff at Chalmitt High for participating. I think it was a wonderful and productive day, and we can't wait to have them back on our campus again.
And, you know, just to reinforce it a little, the new aerospace program that Ms. Lemoine was talking about, we have hundreds of students who attend Nunez for many different pathways that they offer, and this is going to be a new one. So our high school students will, can begin in that program and get the foundation through the aerospace program with the opportunity to secure good jobs that Boeing will be having in the very near future. So we're really excited about that new pathway.
Well, I tell you what, there's a lot of exciting things going on in our parish, huh? This was with Nunez College, with our school system, and it's just the growth of our parish, and that that's a positive thing for us, so. Okay, move on to item number 15, adjournment. Motion, Ms. Esaveta, seconded, Mr. Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. needs to join. Thank you, goodnight.